It's Alter here, Kevin McCollin.
Here.
Lisa Gavelluna.
Here.
Bob Eisberger.
Here.
Bob.
Mary Ann Twyler.
Here.
Thank you.
John Chertier.
Here.
Deb Brady's absent with notice. Kristy Stan.
Here.
Jan Meek.
Here.
Matt Out, Dr. Outlaw.
Here.
And Zoe Harris.
Here.
And Emily Quick.
Here.
All right, we're all here. Can anybody rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, here we have the BHS Studio Report. Welcome Zoe, welcome Emily. You guys have the podium.
We just had a few things from throughout the year. According to the U.S. News and World Reports Criteria used, Brandon High School is ranked in the top 6% of all schools in the state of Michigan and top 17% of all schools in the country. Second place, we had second place at the Flint Metro Math and Science Competition by one point. Noah Cox represented BHS at the National Business Professionals of America Competition in Florida, placing 10th overall in his category. BHS finished third in a STEM Bridge Competition that was held in Maine. Liliana Taylor is a national qualifier for the National Ameris Scholarship, ranking in the top 1% of all students nationwide that took the pre-SAT and the NMS QT test. There was over $10,000 in scholarships handed out to seniors on the honors night. 99% of all students took standardized testing, adding sports statistics and anatomy and physiology to the course catalog in 2017, 2018. Over 100 students annually take part in real-world learning through OSTC campus.
The football team went 8-1 and there were the MHSAA playoffs and they came second in the FMLA league. Zach Clements was on the first team All-State as a punter. For boys soccer, they won the FML, they were the FML Champions two years in a row. Brendan Swix was on the first All-State as a goalie. Nolan Tees was on the second team All-State for defense. Brendan O'Shea was their team All-State midfielder. And for girls golf, Spencer Kochen was a state.
Skylar Kochen was a state qualifier. And for girls swim, Melissa Znaski was a state qualifier for diving. For wrestling, they were the MHSAA Team District Champions four years in a row. Jack Olson was an individual All-State in eighth place. For baseball, they were the MHSAA District Champs. And track and field was, had three All-State placers. For Trisha Pierce, for All-State, fifth place pole vault. Nolan Tees was All-State, seventh place long jump. Brooke Killig was All-State, seventh place for high jump. And for scholar athletes in the fall, for all fall sports, there was 38 scholar athletes. For winter, there was 22 scholar athletes. And for the spring, there was 58 scholar athletes. And eight seniors athletes to date have signed national letters of intent to continue their academic and athletic careers in college.
And then as for student council events throughout the year, we had a homecoming dance. It was themed Dancing Through the Decades. We also had a snow coming dance that was made in Detroit. We had a senior faculty basketball game that we actually combined with another one of our friends, Lip Sync, as a halftime show and it worked out very well. And then we had two successful blood drives.
If I may, so you guys pretty nervous up there?
Yeah.
Just a couple of things in summary going forward. You know, first of all, we're all pretty interested in what you guys have to say. So try, you know, to relax a little bit. You know, we're all, we really are, we want to hear what you have to say, we want to hear what's going on. And feel free just to, you know, add commentary in there too, what you think's important. Because look at it this way, pretty much none of us, you know, in this room are really in the school like you guys are. So whatever you think is, I'll call it interesting or newsworthy, you know, just let us know what it is. But we are all interested in what you have to say, so try to feel as comfortable as possible. I apologize for starting late tonight and to have people, I don't like to do that. But that's what happened. So normally, you know, you guys kind of kick off pretty much first, you know, and then we go through all our agenda business. You don't have to stay for all of it. I always encourage it personally, just because like.
I'll go with you.
Yeah, he can go and you can stay. No, just like we're hearing things from you that we don't get exposed in, you know, you may hear things from us that you don't get exposed in, but that's your choice. But if I may, since you're brand new, could I ask you guys to tell us at least a little bit about yourselves? So we kind of know who you are. And if you want anything about us, feel free to ask too, because we're going to spend the next year together.
I'm Zoe, I'm going to be a junior. And I've played volleyball with the school, I've played basketball with the school, and I also played golf at the same time as volleyball this past year. And I'm the Class of 2019 President and I'm also in Student Council.
How did you get selected for this job here?
The seniors that were here that you guys are used to, they were supposed to bring people to like, show them like what was going on, but they ended up not being able to do that. So we volunteered to come in their place for the last one and then last for the next year.
Okay, so we don't know if we're going to see each other all next year?
Yeah, we have no clue. Just because of how our schedules may work out next year, so there may be other people here next year.
So what makes that decision? Is it a volunteer type thing or does someone assign you or vote it or what?
If no one wants to volunteer for it, then they will be assigned to it. But most people will just volunteer for it.
I'm going to ask, if someone else showed up, that's if they volunteer if they were assigned. All right, thank you. Emily?
Hi, I'm Emily Quick. I'm going to be a sophomore. I played on volleyball team for our school and I also played on the softball team for our school. And I'm Student Council and I'm also on the Class of 2020 Executive Board.
All right, well, thank you all for coming, I appreciate it. And I'll take your time out of your busy lives. Thank you for coming, appreciate it. Hopefully we'll see you later.
Are you a setter?
Me?
Yeah.
Uh, no, I'm a back row specialist.
Back row specialist.
Oh!
She's very talented.
Thank you.
Okay, superintendent's reports, Dr. Outlaw.
To be short and quick, our guests hit on some of the same topics here. Just wanted to say that we're concluding 16, 17 school year. Take a deep breath, we had a great year again. Obviously, there's some big things that happened with reorganization and things like that that get a lot of attention. But we had a lot of outstanding things that happened across the district. Very proud of our students, staff, and so on and so forth. So a couple of things here, our test scores are up in all areas. We will get our M-Step scores for this next year, we will get those in the fall, so that'll be great. NWA scores, we did those multiple times during the years, the district continued to move forward. Since 2014, we've gone up almost 10% title points in math and almost 6% title points in DLA. So we're making some steady progress as a district. Obviously, our science are set much higher, but we're moving forward, which is positive for the district. One of our branded 2025 goals is helping our students be prepared for the next level. 91% of the class of 2016 went to college this year, which was really fantastic. That was achievement of one of our branded 2025 goals. We have 83% of the class of 17 that has indicated that they intend to go to college in the fall. 39% of our graduates go to college with a scholarship. We have students accepted to a number of very competitive colleges, including Brown, University of Michigan, Kettering, Loyola. We have, we already heard about the athletes and OTC, the gals already talked about that. Some of the awards, we already heard about Brandon High School being rated in the top 6% of schools by USA Today. The top bottom ranking, 77th percentile may seem like not a big deal, but when it's compared against elementary schools, middle schools. When it comes to high schools, we are very high, we're actually higher than Clarkston, we're higher than Bluefield Hills High School, Oxford High School, Holly High School, all below Brandon. And so they did a really nice job, and this is based on those test scores that we saw. Our STEM program did extremely well with the bridge competition nationally, future problem solvers. This is Taylor's son, her daughter, did a great job, the National Ameris Qualifier, Noah Cox, went on to the national level, was in the top 10 in the BPA. Fantastic, great stuff going on across the district. Heard about our extracurricular from our high school folks, but we had a great year athletically and in our extracurriculars. Really excited about some of the progress that have been made. Band and choirs, they didn't get a big shout out there, but they continuously get these one ratings at festival. Got an outstanding arts program and they're doing an outstanding job. STEM robotics, future problem solvers, all of these are points of pride for the district. Few other things, we talked about it in our work session, but since the 2014 school year, we've added 1,072 devices to enhance learning for our students across the district. We've done that through grants and it's really expanded opportunities for our kids. And we should be very proud of that as a district. And I think that we are changing instruction and bringing new opportunities to kids, that they don't have a lot of school districts at this level. Preschool, last year they received a five-star rating. It's been best of the best since 2015. See how that turns out in July of this year. The 1 million pages was a big community-wide initiative that we did last year that we launched, focusing on the value of literacy and reinforcing the importance of literacy for our students. And our goal was to reach 1 million pages as a community. We hit, we were over 1.2 million pages and we're doing it again right now. And I think it's very exciting, but I also think it should be a real point of pride, not just for our school district, but I think for our community as a whole. While it's not glamorous, Jan's going to talk, Ms. Meek is going to talk about budget and again, a balanced budget. But you say, yeah, that's not that big a deal, but when you think about the adjustment to the student enrollment, the fact that not only have we balanced the budget, but we're adding to fund balance at the same time, it means that the people sitting up here in front of you are making the tough decisions, are thinking ahead, are planning, and doing the things that they need to do to keep us financially healthy. We are getting healthier each year in spite of a lot of great challenges. So I think that's another real point of pride to our Board of Education and for the school district. Kindergarten enrollment, we're on target to be up for the third straight year. This goes back to stabilizing the district with our enrollment. Starts with our early childhood investment that this board made in 2014. We've invested heavily in our early childhood program and we're seeing the fruits of it. We've increased, we're on track to increase yet again in kindergarten. Again, that helps us stabilize as a district, is bringing more kids in and providing great opportunities for them. Project Lead the Way was piloted this year at the Brandon Academy and it's going to be a K-5 program. You might take that for granted, but that is something that really puts Brandon, separates us from many other districts. There are not a lot of districts doing a program like that that are that committed to doing a program that brings so many opportunities to kids. So I think it's a real point of pride for our teachers, our staff, and for the Board of Education for putting that out there for our kids. Another thing, another investment that came from our Board of Education has to do with community education and our aquatics program. These are programs that had dwindled and they've made an investment. They are putting programs out there, saw it in the middle of the Citizen over the weekend, giant thing with some of the opportunities that are there for kids in the summertime. And there'll be even more opportunities in the fall. But very excited about what's happening there. It's not all about what happens in the classroom, it's also about after-school programs like extracurriculars and enrichment things that come through community education. And then finally, in the 15th school year, this Board of Education made some significant investments in extracurriculars, putting more money in there for student clubs and activities. And we've seen great benefits from those. One of those is future problem solvers that is continuing to grow, bringing opportunities. Those make a big difference. Classroom is so important, but having a well-rounded education with things like Project Lead the Way, extracurricular activities, that's where the richness of a really well-rounded education comes from. So we could go on and on about things, but I wanted to point out some of the points of pride and just say how proud I am of all the people that are part of the Brandon School District. And I look forward to an even better 17, 18 school year. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Outlaw.
Thank you.
Before we move to our public comments and questions on Agenda Business, two things we're going to change. Our action item A, which was approval of the sixth grade honors textbook, we're going to take that off our action item as in our work session, we decided that tonight was the introduction of the textbook and that in July, we will take a vote on the textbook. So, thank you. So, and also, item B, approval of technology projects where it says, item number two on there, C-HI computer products purchased in the amount not to exceed $129,420. That dollar value is going to be changed to not to exceed $11,000, again, based on information from our work session. With that being said, we have two people who've signed up to address the board, Andrea and Dana. So whichever order you two would like to go, please feel free to address the board.
Hello, everyone. Andrea Austin, I'm a fifth grade, well, no, now a sixth grade, a fourth grade and a first grade parent. I want to thank everybody, especially because it's summer break, for everybody else, but here you are, all still working and so, you know, forging ahead. I was so lucky, I made a mistake last week and came to the workshop, or that it was the results of the recommendation of the sex ed committee, thinking it was this meeting today. And I was so lucky to be at that meeting because I was educated beyond what I thought I already knew about this subject. And I have an amazing appreciation for that committee and the amount of time they spent, the research, the facts, the data. I was incredibly impressed when I learned there was even a third G member on that committee who was part of the unanimous recommendation for abstinence-based education. I can only assume that that person is looking at it from many different hats and I was very impressed by that. I'm here as a fifth grader, well, now a sixth grade parent, my child has not had the puberty education and I hope that he does in fact get that going forward through the school, through the educators I trust. I trust that educators in this district more than anyone around me. I heard some questions, you know, could kids be bullied if they learn this type of information? I think that we can look to every other district in Oakland County that is using this curriculum and get facts to know that that is not a source of bullying if one student knows and another person doesn't. I just feel like we need to make our decisions in facts and I feel like we could find that information if we needed to. But the image in their head concern, the problem with that is it's already there. It's already there. And I know it's there because in BFIS, many times there were failances drawn on the bathroom walls all the time. And our fantastic custodians would take care of it right away, that the kids are drawing these things in fourth and fifth and sixth grade, they're little ones. And what scares me is where else could someone learn this information if they can't learn it through a trusted clinical educational setting? I would be scared to type it into YouTube and hit the button. And I would be frightened for my child to do that at any age. Because the images that are going to come across on YouTube are going to be much worse than a clinical setting with educated providers of this information. I'm standing here as a parent, I'm addressing our board, and I know that we're all making a decision here. Please remember that ability to opt out is there for any parent that's uncomfortable. So if that thing is bugging you in the back of your mind and it's really uncomfortable for you, just understand, any parent that doesn't want their child to have this education has the ability to opt out. But 94% of your parents want this. I am begging you, please. We have a moral obligation as adults with an education. We know that these tools are here to prevent the loss of life. That's what we're talking about. I can't think of a more important vote that you would ever have as a school board, ever. We're talking about potential loss of life, crippling diseases. Pregnancy, of course, is a factor, but we're talking about something much bigger than this. And I would never want a child to eventually lose their ability to have children or have cervical cancer or any other horrible illness because we did not provide at least the chance to have the education. Please, please, make this available to us, we need it, we want it. 94% of us want it, please, thank you.
Thanks, Andrea. Dana?
Dana DePalma, and I'm here as a resident and as a parent of now a sixth grade daughter and a fourth grade son. And before I start, what I wrote, just to top of what Andrea said, is it's also to help for those because it helps you know what's right and what's wrong and maybe some character education in there too to help save, so maybe boys and girls aren't out there raping or whatever you want to call it to somebody else, so girls know where to get help or boys know where to get help. And because there's all that in there too. And it's going to help them make a decision on what they should and shouldn't do to help save their lives. So I just wanted to add that. Now into what I, I feel it is so important to provide the students with an education to be informed by choosing to be abstinence-based. This is needed for their future. And again, like Andrea said, where else can they learn this? They can learn it at home from their parents, but some don't get that from their parents. And that is the scary thing out there, is some are not learning this. I'd rather the home and school be on the same page. And the students rather discuss it with their teachers and their parents, even if the parents are willing to discuss it. I have friends who have kids in my kids' grade, but they have high school kids and they try to discuss them, the parents. The kids are like, no, mom, we're not going to discuss that with you. So they're going to go to their teachers, they're going to look at their educators as advisors. And those educators know more maybe than what the parents do because they've been educated in this. So I feel that when the teachers right now have to say, no, I can't give you this answer in health class in ninth to 12th grade, whichever year they take it, the teacher has to say, I can't tell you, go ask your parents. Kids aren't going to go ask their parents, they're going to go to the internet. And there's so much out on that internet that is so scary, that they're going to find stuff that's not true, not appropriate, or they're going to go to their friends and their friends might not know, or their friends might know some stuff that's not appropriate. So I think that by the teachers being their educators and their advisors, it's going to help the kids maintain to be, want to be abstinence longer and give them the knowledge to know what's right and wrong, what they should and shouldn't be doing and make that decision to have a healthier lifestyle. I lost where I was, sorry. We are the only district in Oakland County that does not provide this education. This education was provided over 30 years ago for students, so it's not a brand-new thing. This has been out here forever, so why are we not doing this? There's also the parent preview nights, so you can go and see what's being taught and then you know, if you're a parent who kind of have this conversation with your kids, to talk about it with them. And that way then if you feel you don't want to, you can opt out. There's that choice if you're not interested. There's no choice to opt in, so if you take this away, the families who want it, that 94% who want it can't get it. There's no opt in, but there's an opt out. I want to also say that fourth and fifth graders don't get any reproductive health. It's teaching your body. We teach skeletal system, we teach muscular system, we teach your respiratory system, but we don't teach reproductive system. And then seventh and eighth grade, it's an elective. So again, you don't have to have it in middle school and it's not even the contraceptive part in middle school anyways. And ninth through 12, it's one year, so you don't have to have your student take it if they're 14 and you feel they're too young, you can wait until they're later. I want to thank everybody's hard work. I think the surveys are very important of what the community wants. I think the unanimous vote of that committee speaks a lot and so does the research, so why wouldn't we provide this for our students' future? Thank you.
Thanks, Andrea. Okay, moving on to approval of our consent agenda, do we have a motion?
Approve that the Brandon Board of Education approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of approval of our consent agenda, please vote by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, and the opposed. Okay, consent agenda passes. Next item is financial report, budget presentation by Jan.
Okay, hello again. Whoa, is that too low?
Well, move.
Keep going.
By the door.
Outside. State of Michigan mandates that we hold a public budget hearing by June 30 for every year too, so that the board can vote to adopt next year's budget. The subject is the public budget hearing, but also the tax, truth and taxation hearing, so I will be discussing both tonight. We have three budgets, three separate budgets. Our general fund, of course, is our biggest budget, our childcare fund and our food service fund. I'll be discussing all three. Again, the budget assumptions, when I say again, we talked about some of these things in our study session. For next year, we're assuming a $120 student increase, a $150 student decrease. Our PA education, special education funding, we're taking a big hit next year, $185,313. And again, that is money that Oakland School sends us. We're looking at an increase on our medical costs of 3.5%. Our retirement, for every dollar of payroll, we pay 24.94% to the state pension fund. 10 instructional staff reduction and two administrative staff reductions. Regarding our property tax levy, our non-homestead tax levy, 17.8706 mils next year, the same as this year. Our non-homestead property value, 147,9603. We just had a very slight increase of 5,848, so our revenue from our property tax levy is not going up much next year. Debt levy, that's on all property here, 12.16 mils. Our all property values did increase by 3.2%, an increase of about 18 million. So that side of it, the homestead values increased, we just, the non-homestead commercial did not. Investments, every year we work on how we want to spend some additional money to improve our instructional programs. And as Dr. Outlaw discussed, Project Lead the Way, we're investing in that next year. Our technology upgrades, sorry, this was written before today, $150,000, that's now been reduced based on information we got today. Our curriculum textbooks, about $70,000 or so, and that's been discussed as well. And then we are purchasing two new special education buses. That will bring our fleet inventory, next year we'll have 19 new or newer buses, which is really good. We are seeing reductions in transportation in terms of fuel. The new buses are more efficient and repairs and that type of thing. So Deb Allen is happy that we're going to add a couple new buses. And just by the way, the special education buses, we do get reimbursed from the state 70%. These are small and I apologize, but the revenue analysis, I wanted to compare the final budget this year, it's not actual yet, we haven't had our audit, to the proposed. And you can go down each line and see the percentage as well as an actual dollar amount. I'll just point out the highlights. We're looking next year, our state revenue, we're looking to, projecting that that will decrease a little over $750,000. a little over $750,000. That's the net of the increase of 120 and 150 student loss. So right now, our state revenue and our Oakland County, our Oakland School PA-18 money is almost $200,000. That's basically the highlights for our revenue reduction. So we're looking at, our revenue is projected to reduce about $886,000 next year, which is a big number, because we're a smaller school district. Fortunately, we have, due to the consolidation of buildings, which is a big driver in our expenditure reduction. Again, if we look at the right-hand side, increase-decrease, you'll see the decrease in instructional costs due to less instructional staff, instructional support, operations and maintenance. We are projecting a reduction next year. We just had some things this year that we hope do not, we don't have those extras next year. So we're looking to reduce expenditures by 1.1 million. And these, again, a different way to show expenditures, but let me go back to prior screen. This showed it by function, and so instruction, support, general business, different categories. This next slide is the same total amount, but it's showing our expenditures by salaries, benefits, purchase services, materials and supplies, capital outlay, and other. So again, you can see where our salaries and benefits make up the, most of the expenditure reduction. Our fund balance analysis, we're looking to, I'm projecting a surplus this year of about almost $300,000. Next year, a surplus of $536,000. Our 2016, 17 fund balance, we're looking at about $3.5 million to end the year, or 13.7%. And that's 13.7% of revenue. That's how it's calculated now. Next year, we're looking to increase fund balance to over 16%. Once again, we're assigning fund balance of 1.2 million. There was some discussion, we may actually be increasing that to give us some cushion. So after we assign our fund balance, we still are over the 8% that has been discussed. It is what we would like to keep as a district, over 8%. So financially, we're doing well. I want to talk about our childcare, our childcare fund. The childcare fund, it's funded, the accounts for activity in our preschool academy, this is not GSRP. GSRP is separate. We get money from the state for GSRP. So this is our preschool academy and our latchkey programs. We are increasing the fees slightly for next year to help our operating deficit that we have this year. So we're looking to transfer $56,000. This is our investment in our young, our young kids, and we feel that this is paying off in our kindergarten enrollment, terms of numbers, as well as how prepared the kids are for kindergarten. So that would be a savings next year in that transfer. The state mandates, or the accounting rules are such that no fund can have a negative fund balance. So food service or childcare fund have a negative fund balance, the general fund has to transfer money to cover that. That's not a choice, that's how, what we have to do, so. Food service fund, we are, once again, four years in a row, no increase in lunch prices. Suzanne does a great job in the food service. Projective revenue is almost $1 million next year. Half of that, about half of that is federal meal reimbursement that we get, and then the other half is through paid lunches. Expenditures, $958,000. Looking, the food school service fund, opposite of childcare fund, actually transfers money back into the general fund. We're allowed to transfer up to 15% of non-food costs. We do that every year. Looking to do $65,000 next year. So our ending fund balance in food service is $312,000. I don't think we'll get a letter from the state saying we have to spend some. We've had to actually spend money from the food. There's rules on how much of the fund balance you can have. So great program, and it continues to be a really good program. Suzanne's on top of that. That's all I have. Any questions?
Again, excellent job.
Okay, thank you.
Education report, Kristi.
So that's related to what we've already discussed at the workshop. Moving forward from there, we just found out today that we received the last, we got approval for the last sum of an educator evaluation grant, so that we can provide professional learning to teachers to improve instructional providing to our students. I was very excited about that. Of course, we received the grant right this past year that I wrote to be able to run summer school this year. So again, I'm excited that we can offer our kids summer school. That's by invitation to students who are in kindergarten first and second, going into first, second, and third, who are struggling, in particular with reading. And this will support our initiatives. Also, as the, this fall, we start implementing the third-grade reading legislation that we heard about last year, that passed a lot, passed, so. Providing our, that was, I know it was conversation before, but the legislation that passed a lot, the picture that our kids are reading by third grade. And summer school helps us close that gap and keep our kids flying. Yeah, those are the two things I'm celebrating right now.
How are we doing on that? Are we doing all right?
On which?
With the third grade?
With the third grade reading? So I would say that, you know, we're actually in the middle of the pack when you look at our reading scores. The, if you look at the M-stuff, if the M-stuff is the one piece that you want to use to really evaluate how kids are reading, then we're right in the middle. We look at, we start with our kids when they come to us, whether they're in preschool, JK, kindergarten first, second, third, all the way up. What are we doing to support them, with wherever they are on their journey? And we have a lot of kids who are constantly, I mean, all of our kids, they're making progress, they're all growing. The law that came forth, it's interesting, because really, there are a lot, and I know I've covered this before, and I'm happy to send you more information on it, but the law sets this up so that while they say that kids will be retained in third grade if they're not reading at level, it then also says, except if they've already been on a plan, and they've already been part of a multi-system of support, and they've already been getting these extra interventions, and possibly they have a 504 plan, and/or they might have an IEP. And if, and/or if they are successful in the other core areas. There are all these pieces. So really, the law itself, it's really, I think, more than anything about putting reading on the radar for every school district. And I feel like we've really had it on our radar for countless years. We were one of the first people in the county to add reading recovery, which is...
Let me ask you this.
Yeah.
If you say it's voluntary?
What is voluntary?
The summer school?
It's, it's by invitation.
By invitation?
It is voluntary, we can't make the...
Do you call the parents or send a letter to the parents and say, "Your child..."
Absolutely. Yes.
Now, if they can't, do the parents have to bring them?
No, we actually, the grant covers transportation.
Covers transportation?
Isn't that great?
That's what I wanted to know.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to know.
And food services, we were just talking about how great Suzanne Evanson is. We don't have enough free and reduced students currently to be able to offer free lunches for the summer, but she's able to provide snacks for our kids coming to summer school every day, which I think is a wonderful thing. Yeah, it is awesome.
Excellent, thank you very much. Okay, now, moving on with our action items. Starting with our first one, which is approval of our technology projects. Can we get a motion for this?
Move that the Brandon Board of Education approve the following E-rate reimbursed technology projects. One, Appleland Systems purchase in the amount not to exceed $26,955, and two, the Sehi, oh, sorry, $27,260,000. Okay. And Sehi computer products, purchased in the amount not to exceed $11,000 as presented.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? I know we talked about it in the workshop. Okay. All those in favor of approving the two technology programs of finances purchased in the amount of $27,260, and Sehi computer products in the amount not to exceed $11,000, please vote by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Next, adoption of our final 2016, 2017 budget.
Move the Brandon Board of Education adopt the final 2016, 2017 amended budget as presented.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on this, as we've already heard from Jan? Hearing seen none. All those approving, all those in favor of approving the, or, excuse me, all those in favor of adopting the final 2016, 2017 amended budget as presented, please vote by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay. Adoption of the proposed 2017, 2018 budget.
Move the Brandon Board of Education adopt the 2017, 2018 budget as presented.
Support.
Yeah, any discussion on this? Hearing seen none. All those in favor of adopting the 2017, 2018 budget as presented, please vote by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, approval of our 2017 tax levy.
Move that the Brandon Board of Education approve the 2017 L-4029 tax levy as presented.
Second.
Okay, you have any discussion on this matter? No, it's was presented to us in the form. Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the 2017 L-4029 tax levy as presented, please vote by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay. Approval of middle school band and choir overnight trip to Mackinac City slash island.
Move that the Brandon Board of Education approve the middle school band and choir overnight trip to Mackinac City, which I'm going to go with, no, May 4th and 5th, 2018 as presented.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on this matter? Hearing seen none. All those in favor of approving the middle school band and choir overnight trip to Mackinac City slash island, please vote by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Right. Adoption of the school meal charging policy.
Can I ask what that's all about?
Dan? Much promotion first.
Move that the Brandon Board of Education approve to adopt the school meal charging policy as presented.
Second.
This is...
Please.
Yes, this is a policy to, we currently allow students to, if they don't have lunch money and their account's in the negative, we allow them to charge. So after two, after they've charged a couple meals, this policy says that the way we handle that is a correspondence between the districts of Suzanne's her office and the parent. We are, we are not putting children in the middle of the financial discussion, because it's not their fault that their parents have it. So we don't shame children. They still get a regular meal, and it's just a policy.
No, that's perfect.
Yeah. And the state has asked us. Okay, that's what it's about.
And we don't pick up the financial matter with the student.
Exactly. Not hungry, and don't worry about it.
Right, and we have to write, if we have bad debt, we have to write that off in the general fund to cover that.
The kids got to eat, they got to eat.
And treat them the same as everybody else in line.
No, no separate lunch.
Oh, no, I'm not, I just didn't know about it. It's perfect.
It's actually, it's...
I used to give money to kids when I was teaching.
Right.
You're not going to sit there without a meal.
So our food service department and our cashiers have, you know, understand this policy, and they will, they will not say anything to the child about having a negative balance.
Yeah, that is perfect.
Okay. All those in favor of approving to adopt the school meal charging policy as presented, please vote by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? All right. Approval of our labor contract to Brandon Education Association.
Move that the Brandon Board of Education approve, the Brandon Board of Education approve the Brandon Education Association BEA based on the contract as presented.
We're in our choice.
Basically, move that the Brandon Board of Education approve the Brandon Education Association labor contract as presented.
Thank you. That is correct, thank you.
Second.
We talked about this in the work session. This is a stopgap budget. This will take us through October. It's agreed that there's no increases for our teachers, but we've agreed that we're going to give ourselves a few months to get financial clarity, so the state can finish their budget, so we can get a clear picture of our enrollment, and we get a better idea on some of the projects that are pending for us in building sales, and so on and so forth. So we're buying ourselves some time here, and we will get back to the negotiating table in the fall. That's what this is.
And we have two mandates. It also allows us, so that our teachers don't have to absorb the full cost of the Mesa, the medical increase. If we didn't do this, then they would have less take-home pay. So this, this does benefit them in that way.
So basically, both sides have a plus side.
Yes, actually, one might say that actually, yeah, the teachers maybe benefited more because of the medical, but that was good, we wanted that, yeah, so.
Good faith in the part of the district, and care about our teachers. And at this time, we need time before we can really negotiate good faith. So that's all I have.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the Brandon Board of Education and the Brandon Education Association labor contract as presented, please vote by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, our last action item is approval of food service department staff reductions.
Move that the Brandon Board of Education approve the following unfortunate food service department staff reduction due to the closure of the BFIS Christine Blevins and Cynthia Allen. Probably heads off to them.
Okay, any discussion on that?
Why those two? Low severity?
Yeah, they're low severity. And this is obviously across the district. We talked about those savings that came from organized in the district. Came in many packages, teachers, everything, including food service.
We just don't like to see them.
Oh, I did stuff, reducing, I agree.
Thank goodness. Okay, sorry.
Okay, all those approving following food service department reductions due to the closure of BFIS Christine Blevins and Cynthia Allen, please vote by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay. Wish Christine and Cynthia the best of luck in the future. With that being said, we're at our last item, our citizens input. Does anyone like to address the board this evening?
Oh, not you again?
I know, I'm sorry. I'll be good. I just wanted to say, I didn't know about that food policy thing, cafeteria thing, and that just makes my heart beat happy. So happy, that, what a sigh of relief. And I just, I forgot to mention this when I was talking before. I just want to give a little, a comparison to another issue that we would all want our children to abstain from, which would be drinking. When I talk to my children about drinking, of course, don't do it, don't do it, don't do it. But the other tool I know I will give my student or my child is that if you were to make that mistake, you can call me, and I will come pick you up at any time. And if they're, if they're, they come across a friend that's had too much to drink, they can go to the emergency room and help that friend. I think that we've, we've seen the lesson when it comes to drinking, that giving children, understanding that there's a safety net at the very last second, when the mistake has happened, lives can be saved. I just wanted to give that as well, a cross analogy. Of course, we want them to abstain from sex. Of course, we want them to abstain from drinking. We just have to make sure they have the tools in case the mistake happens. Thank you.
Thank you. And hearing seen no other, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you all, appreciate it.